It is now 7:00 PM, so welcome to the Monday and October 15th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Please join us for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberating, and just as for all.
Please be advised, regular Board of Selectmen's meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 15, the government channel, and all comments are recorded for airing at future dates. First up, we have an announcement that Bill will be reading.
We have a announcement here to the Selectmen's office in regards to the Pembroke Constable, Robert Dulissy, who is resigning from his elected position effectively October 12, 2018, to pursue a new career. This creates a vacancy in the role of constable from October 13 through the town election in May 18, 2019. We've let the town administrator know if the Board desires advertising the vacancy of the town website, excuse me, and social media platforms to develop a pool of candidates to be considered by the Board for an interim appointment. And the only thing that I would like to say about that is that I know that I would not be running for a constable come May election, but if the Board wants to, I have no problem taking the position from now until May. So, I mean, I have 53 years of law enforcement experience, am the sworn deputy at Puma County Sheriff's Department, and I would definitely fill in if needed, unless there's somebody else that you want to put in there, unless the chief has something, I wouldn't mind doing it for that short period of time.
I'd certainly be a great candidate.
So, Bill, you'd be excellent at it, you have the experience, no question about it. I would like to wait to see the pool of candidates that apply, and secondly, I'm not sure that it's possible for the, maybe, but I'm not sure that it's possible for the selectmen to appoint a sitting selectman to a position that gets paid. And, you know, every time you serve a warrant, you get $25.
I mean, you're paid positions.
Well, yeah, you get paid like $25 a warrant, and it's, you know, not, so that's something to think about. So, let's talk about it next week, could we put it on the agenda for next week?
I'm just saying that I would be available and be more than welcome to sit on the position for a short period of time.
No, you'd be excellent at it. So, can we talk about it next week?
All right, I'll put that down on the agenda for next week. Before we move on to our scheduled appointment with the moderator and advisory committee, we would like to have the treasurer collector come up for a brief update. Thank you for coming in.
I just had a quick request for Board of Selectmen. With our upcoming borrowing that we're going to have, we have a couple items on there where I need to ask you for a useful life extension of borrowing. Typically, we're allowed five years for any given term on the articles that are listed in front of you. There's six of them, and I'm going to go over them real quick. I'd like for an extension on a fire equipment, the turnoff alarm mechanism. Currently, the NFPA has an over 10-year term on that. We're requesting some platoon personnel on that. We have a fire equipment extraction equipment that currently, our equipment right now, is over 20 years old. I'm asking for a useful life of 10 years for that. We have two fire company trucks coming up. Currently, both of them are over 20 years old. I would ask for one of them to have an eight-year term and one to have a 15-year term. We have fire hoses and appliances article coming up. Currently, ours are over 25 years old. I was asking for a 10-year term on those. And last but not least, I have a DPW truck and plow that's on the next town meeting. Currently, the one that we have is 18 years old and over 212,000 miles, so I'd like to ask for a 10-year term on that. What's in front of the clerk, Mr. Bolton, to read? It's just basically giving the town the vote to borrow those, an extension of over five years.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the attached, as the clerk, the Board of Selectmen, the treasurer wants to report to the fact that she will require the Board signature involving paperwork from November 7. And the paperwork will be available tonight as well as anyone that's unavailable during the day from the end of this week. I'd request that you do. Has he read yet? I will go to the clerk of the Board of Selectmen for the town of Pembroke, Massachusetts, certify that in a meeting of the Board held October 15, 2018, in which meeting all members of the Board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following vote was unanimously passed, all of which appears upon the official record of the Board in my custody. And it lists all of the equipment that Ms. McGarthy talked about. After the certified of the votes, were taken in an open public meeting, and no vote was taken by secret ballot, at the notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which generally included the adoption of the votes. It was filed by the town clerk. A copy there was posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building of the office of the town clerk is located, or is applicable, in accordance with the alternative methods of notice prescribed by the, and approved or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940 C M R 29.032B for these 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays prior to the time of the meeting and remanded so posted to the time of the meeting, and no deliberation or direction in connection with the subject matter of what was voted or taken in effective session, all in accordance with the master notice, chapter 38, 18 through 25, as amended.
Second.
All right, he's been motioned second, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none, passing the end.
Before you go, Kathleen, though, just for the public's benefit, could you just tell the public why this is important?
Sure. So, each of our fire tricks are around 625,000, our fire equipment, both of them, one was around 140, one was around 70,000. The fire hoses were about 75,000, and the DPW trucks around 75,000. Extend the useful life of the borrowing allows the town's people to pay less. Basically, it's extending your car payment longer than five years, although we will be able to do that because cars typically is within a five-year usage, but it makes it more affordable for the town people.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, and thank you to the advisory committee and moderator for waiting. Now, we'll move on to the scheduled appointment. Go pretty comfortably.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board and Advisory. Appreciate this opportunity to have this meeting as we do prior to every town meeting. And for those who are watching at home, just to explain, I'd always say this prior to every meeting, because I think it's important for people to know, that the purpose of this pre-meeting is not to come up with a pre-eranged conclusion on every article, it's just to set up a process so that we're all clear on who's going to make the motions and what the recommendations are by the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee, so that we're all clear, we know where we're all coming from, and so that we kind of have a process to come up with a conclusion everybody can understand. As I always say, it's up to the town meeting to decide each and every article, and whether they want to amend the articles or not. It's not up to the Board of Selectmen, it's not up to the Advisory, it's up to the town meeting. So, I think these have been very productive so that we're all, we all understand where we're coming from, and that we've kind of established a process so that we're not kind of wallowing around waiting for someone to produce a piece of paper during the meeting. The meeting is next Tuesday at 7 o'clock at the high school. We start at 7:00, we've been doing that for the last couple of years. We have probably about 20-something items of business when we include the CPC articles. These, I say this again before every, at every one of these meetings, but these meetings are really important. We can't set the tax rate, we can't balance the budget, we can't pay overdue bills that are due, we can't hire, we can't do a number of things unless these, we can accomplish the business at the meeting, and that can't be done unless we get it formed. So, I ask people to get there as early as they can, sometimes it takes a while to check in, so we can start as close to 7:00 as possible, and we can get out before playoff game.
That talks playing early tomorrow.
Yeah, oh, it's early, yeah, well, anyway, we'll get you out at half past 8:00. So, as we always do, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to go through each article and just make sure that we're all understand where we're coming from, and the question from after 8:00, and I may have to move myself. The first article is, the first two actually seem fairly routine. Article 1 is to transfer the surplus revenue to reduce the tax rate. Article 2 is similar. Article, and assuming everybody's been reading particularly, put it in the law, and everyone's going to use, and the advisory is putting in, or the board.
Take the poll out.
One's actually to fund the, is this a snow nice?
It's snow and ice.
Yeah, right. So, Advisory will look both of those. And I should also say to the folks listening and watching, that Articles, our copy's available for Town Hall, and all of the articles have been posted online the last couple of weeks, so you can see them there. Article 3 is to supplement the solid waste budget.
You have favorable rate.
In the figure, what comes up, I'm sorry, 1920?
Increase the budget.
Oh, please, excuse me if I turn it fast, right. Everybody's in agreement?
Yes.
Article 4 is a long list of purchases, and some require borrowing, as I understand.
Yes.
Obviously, some do not. Is everybody in agreement with what's going forward?
We have not taken action on it yet.
So, my only concern from a particular standpoint, if there's an item that's on the warrant that the advisory committee is not in favor, I'm guessing the Board would still like to move it, am I correct?
Well, right now, their recommendation is the town meeting floor.
Okay. Well, okay.
I have to give back.
That's right, I didn't see that, the Selectmen's gave a recommendation, okay. So, I guess, so some or all of this may not, several of these may not actually go forward.
There may be some.
So, you'll admit that, yeah. I just want people to see in the warrant, why I'm actually think we're going to buy them, so a lot of these things are not going to happen. And we'll have separate motions for that, for those that require borrowing. Article 5 is... Oh, that's right, okay, that's the one I actually got a question on, I have to find exactly what the article is, it looks like the 13.
We have favorable rate.
Okay, and if you could just explain what this terms, if I'm...
Basically, it's allowing, exchanging how our warrants have been, they're not, but it's going to rethrow it back all prior. Borrowing, where the warrant is going to be in it from now on, can you borrow?
So, Advisory move that, and at this point. Article 6 is to create a water department stabilization fund.
Favorable rate.
I'm assuming everybody's got a thought about that, and the advisory committee will move that, and that requires two-thirds. Article 7 is to transfer funds to supplement several benefit funds. Looks to be routine.
We have favorable rate.
Advisory committee's standing on that one. Article 8 is the same, to supplement certain line items, wages, salary.
Yeah, I'm not real sure, I know that, oh...
This is, this is transfer, okay.
This is transferring money from various departments, any one, and I know that Advisory is in favor of it. I think I may, may speak to this. Advisory should take the motion, and then we'll let the town being, I haven't decided whether or not I'm in favor of this yet. We'll see if I do it again in the spring, but we'll see.
I sense that if everyone's in agreement, is the guy going to go forward with this anyway, or...
Well, we can, we can make the motion under favorable rate, and we can, from there.
To simplify, if, if, if everyone's in agreement not to go forward with this, I just just may have the motion to take no action, and then we...
We'll discuss this prior to the meeting, and we'll re-vote it if it's necessary, if they aren't, or...
Obviously, just as I'm worried right now.
We could have the, the ones who've got it for the next town meeting, we'd vote that.
Article 9 is to convey some parcels of land. This is four, no, that's the next one. This is tactic.
This goes, yeah, this goes with the Selectmen.
Assuming this is not covered. Article 10 is to convey parcels to the Conservation Commission for conservation and asset preparation.
You have favorable rate.
Everyone's in favor of that, and Advisory committee will move that one. Article 11 submitted by a DPW, bring the thousand supplement for pavement management plan. Both Advisory and Selectmen are recommending to take no action on the article. I'm assuming the DPW wants to move forward with it.
Well, they're not the ones that brought this forward, it's the town administrator, I mean, the DPW director.
Oh, okay, thank you for that distinction. Do we know, have they taken a position on it, or...
Maybe they might show up, I don't know. But right now, we recommend to take no action.
And the reason I asked, I had this discussion with someone earlier. The move to take no action, really, I, it's acceptable, anyone can make it, it's allowable, but I prefer to use it when everybody's in agreement that we take no action. If someone feels that we should take some action on a particular article, and they should move the article, we can debate it, and if it fails, it fails, and if it passes, it passes. So, I'd just be curious whether someone wants to move forward in this, but as of now, I guess the motion to take no action would be appropriate, and you folks would...
Yeah, and the Board agreed.
Article 12 is to compensate the chief of casserole. And assuming everyone's in agreement, the Advisory committee is going to move that article. Article 13 and 14 have both been submitted by the police chief. One is to fund overtime, and the second is to fund two new positions, which we established at the last meeting. So, I'm clear as to, the Selectmen's recommendation of both of these is favorable, but has the Advisory taken a position?
We have not taken a position, so we're not selecting.
Well, actually, they've retired, so...
So, the Selectmen are going to move 13 and 14?
Well, I was going to ask the chief to...
Oh, sure.
It doesn't matter to me, if you want me to speak, someone will be...
I think the Board of Selectmen should move them. We voted favorable action, so we should stand behind that.
I'd agree.
And the chief can explain the particulars to the public.
Obviously, we have more advisory recommendations, but I just, I always like the opponents to take, make the main motion. Article 15 is to add to the community center, what's the position, maintenance, an additional sum of money that's been submitted by the Recreation Commission. Both Advisory and Selectmen have voted to take no action on it, and do we know if the Recreation Commission wants to go ahead with this?
Don't know.
Well, if they do, then obviously we'll be able to make the motion, and the Recreation Commission. And the next articles, 8 through, is it 8? And Article 16 are all community preservation fund expenditures. Article A is for guard rail at the Herring Run.
Normally, the chair of the C P A...
Yeah, yeah, I'll have, at least I'll have the chair now, yeah, so I'll have her.
There's a number of them we haven't voted on yet, you know, maybe in person.
Okay, so Article A, 16, we have. Article B, $10,000, to spore a poison ivy from the stone wall of the Friends Meeting House, and I do understand there's some difference of opinion on that, and is Advisory even taking that?
We have not voted on that yet, again, we're meeting with the C P A.
I don't know whether that will be one, everyone will agree with R, or some party may just go forward, but we'll figure that out between now and the meeting. Recommendation C is to appropriate $12,000, again, this is all CPC money, for ADA compliance at the town landing. Advisory is...
We have not voted on that.
Okay, all right, Selectmen have endorsed that one. Article T is $10,000, D is for $10,000 for the library, three months.
We have favorable rate.
Appears to be in favor of that. Recommendation E is $25,000 for open space, space for conservation restriction at 190 Barker Street, and you're still...
We have not voted on that.
So, we support that. It's property across from the Herring Run, right?
Correct.
And Article, recommendation F is for $7,500 for the Pembroke Historical Society's building ceiling. Everyone appears to be in favor of that. Recommendation G, $20,000 for archaeological survey of 369 Washington Street. Is the Board, Selectmen made a recommendation on that yet?
You said Town and Board.
Just that I haven't yet.
That is the decision.
Town and Board, that's what we made.
Okay. And Advisory...
We have not voted.
And that's the property that we purchased at the corner, right? Corner 14th and 5th grade. Article H is $20,000 for the G A R Hall. Both Selectmen have recommended favorable action, still under advisement by Advisory. Okay, so those are the CPC articles. Article 17 is the article that would create a ban on the use of single-use plastic bags. It's a petition article, and Selectmen are recommending favorable action, and Advisory is...
It's put on committee, or the representative.
Okay, all right, and I've already talked with the petitioner, Stephanie Hagan, and she's ready to move the article, which is, probably will be more discredited in the warrant, it's independent, say, as part of the warrant. 18 is a petition article to request our representatives sponsor a home rule petition to give relief to four retired employees. Steve, this is you, right?
I guess I was the guy to try to warn.
Yeah, so, so I'm going to allow you to make it, the motion. Assuming you're speaking yourself, and the Advisory, you're...
True.
Okay. And the Advisory's recommended favorable, and the Selectmen have, have another recommendation, right?
Town meeting floor.
So, Steve, could you explain that? I just, I don't know, okay, all right. Article 19 is, oh, this is the school one, to, is this the one that he gave property to the school 100 years ago, and now getting it back? Okay, we're not going to build a school up, Route 53. So, this transfers it from the school department back to the town, the Board of Selectmen?
Correct.
And that requires two-thirds, everybody's in favor of it, and that's the last thing of difference. I will just put a plug in for Advisory. I want to thank them, I roll a town meeting for their hard work. I think they're down three members?
Yes.
For the Matt Newman, newest member, and so I'll just, well, give an audience a little plug in, if there are those who might be interested, I think it's very important, I think it is very important, I mean, I cut my teeth in Advisory back in the 80s, and they are looking for some good able-bodied people, not much about compensation, but satisfaction, I'm already tied on the vote, so anybody who's interested, obviously.
One thing I always like to say is, a lot of people, they think that they have to be accounted for, you know, you're looking for people with different age, more people than a lot number of people that usually are compensated.
And that's it, good evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I still can urge everyone to come early, and early enough.
Thank you. And we still do have four minutes left in this joint meeting, and there's plenty of people in the audience, and I was wondering if anybody else had any questions for the Selectmen, Advisory Committee? All right, hearing none, we're moving on. Thank you all for coming in. So, next up at 7:30 is a public hearing on a joint pole hearing with National Grid, Verizon, and this is in regards to 15 Corporate Park. So, I know it is still three minutes early, but I figure we'll go ahead and get started now. So, is Tim Leiford in the audience? Oh, there you go.
Good evening. Tim Leiford, National Grid Electric, 100 East Ashland Street, Rockland. So, National Grid is petitioning to install one jointing on pole, approximately 60 feet east of existing Pole 6 on Oak Street, and this is for new service to 15 Corporate Park Drive, I believe, this is interesting. Any, any questions you have regarding this section?
If none, I'll make a motion, move to grant approval of National Grid and Verizon on the petition to install Pole P 6 on Oak Street, located approximately 60 feet east of Pole P 7. The new pole is required to provide service to 15 Corporate Park Drive, the P 6 from the A, located on private property in accordance with order and Plan 25813951. This, this is the new Brigham of Women's building, is that it?
Unfortunately, I wasn't the engineer on the project, I'm not exactly sure.
Yeah, okay. Second.
All right, that motion, a second, but before we take a vote, since this is a public hearing, I want to give the audience a chance to ask questions if there are... Hearing seeing none, I'll go ahead and take a vote. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Any opposed? There are none. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
So, we do have a scheduled appointment at 7:45 with Mark Soder, and if Mark is in the audience, we can go ahead and take you early if you want. Thank you for coming in. Thank you.
So, thank you for seeing me this evening. I, I'm back, at least I called on the recommendation from the last time I was here, to basically put a process in front of the, or a change to a process that we would like to institute from the Conservation Commission. So, we, again, take with the advisement of what we stated at the last meeting, we took it back, we talked about it at our tuition meeting, and we voted and ratified a procedure that we'd like to share with you and get you to a... that we'd like to share with you and get you to a pretty understanding that you are the appointees of whoever does get appointed, and that's your discretion. But, again, I think what we stated is that, you know, we prefer that somebody better be a best practice, so, again, this is a process to do that. So, you have a letter in front of you that obviously for the record, G S R's, at its meeting on October first, two thousand and eighteen, the Pembroke Conservation Commission adopted the following, it was regarding its volunteer vacancies. The chairman presents the rules to you for review. One, advise me vacancy on the commission for fourteen days to be in the town website homepage and commissions page, relevant social media sites, and in the town hall. Two, require attendance at two commission meetings prior to the submitted of the volunteer application. Three, conduct an interview of each candidate after attending attendance of two meetings and receipt of volunteer application. And four, commission members deliberate on the merits of each candidate, decide which is, are the best fit, and forward their recommendations to the board of selectmen for appointment. So, it's a pretty simple procedure, and just, as a matter of fact, the last, aside from the last appointment, you just got appointed a few weeks ago, in the last four people that got appointed, the two people that went through the process of getting vetted and recommended to you have lasted for a year and are still on the commission. The two that were put on that didn't get vetted, one of them made one meeting and resigned, and the other one made one or two meetings because of, you know, proper issues in terms of things for a year. So, I think that just proves that it is a good practice, a best practice at the moment for us.
Well, I view the four things that you have on here that you want to change, and some of these here are already in the rules and regulations and the procedures that the board of selectmen set up for committees, commissions, to be appointed by the board of selectmen. So some of these are already here. Some of the things that I don't like about it is that when you advertise for a new vacancy on a commission for fourteen days, that's two weeks that goes by that there's nobody sitting on the board. And if they have to make two meetings, which you only meet every twice a month, so that would mean now you're talking about a month and a half before you get somebody that's going to be sitting on the board. And then when you, when you go to require attendance to commission meetings prior, that's going to sit into the first thing I just talked about, was that that's going to make it up to a month and a half before you put anybody on. The conduct and interview by each of the candidates after making attendance to the meetings and receipt of the volunteer application, I don't know whether you have a right to look at, or you're checked out by Cory in order to do the applications, because the way that I read the rules and regulations for the selectmen to make these appointments and to make these interviews is done under our authority, under the general laws, it's not under the authority of the conservation to be doing that and having hearings and interviews for people. So I think it'd be violating the general laws if you did this procedure that you're talking about, number one. And then the commission members deliberate on the merits of each candidate, which we don't know, how long are you going to deliberate? How long is this going to take place before you replace somebody? Because, like we said at the last meeting, when you look at all the rules and regulations and procedures that we made a booklet of, and all the selectmen signed it and they all voted on it, this is what we want all the boards and commissions in the town to do, under the direction of the board of selectmen. And it's pretty specific, and there's a lot of things that's in that little booklet, if you really read it, that talks about everything that should be done and shouldn't be done. And unfortunately, I don't think a lot of that stuff is being done today. And I know one of them would be is that the chairman of any committee is supposed to report back to the board of selectmen when they have a vacancy in that committee, which would be three or more meetings missed. And if my recollection is correct, there's a member that's currently on there now that has missed over three meetings.
I think that's three meetings in a row.
Yeah. And the other thing is, is that not only three in a row, but if you look over a period, over a year's time, there's a lot of other meetings missed. So, the whole purpose to have these boards is to have these boards together and to last together and stay together. But the other thing that you have to consider is that, like the gentleman, Mr. Curly, had just said here, just previously, we're not looking for anybody to sit on a conservation commission that is a commissioner or has some perfect expertise. What we're looking for somebody is that, that will come on and sit on the committee and do something while he's on the committee and be of common sense about what's going on in the town and what's happening. That's why we appoint from different directions and different diversity of people from all over town. So, we have a hard job sometimes getting people to fill boards now. So, I think if conservation had gone by the rules and regulations and procedures that we set up originally, I don't think we would have had a lot of problems with conservation and trying to put people on there. But, number one, it's not advertised, it wasn't on the website. All of those things that are in the directives to you guys, you should be reading and you should be following it, because that's why we made them. I mean, I recently called a former selectman that was on that had a lot to do with making that board up, the procedures up, and to set these procedures forth. So, what you're saying is conservation is different than every other board in the town, and that's not true. What all of our procedures are is for all of the boards and commissions that's in the town, that falls under the direction of the board of selectmen and for us to appoint them. So, if we see a need to appoint somebody on a board, and we bring them in and talk to them here, and we interview them here, and we like what they say or who they are or whatever, we have the right to put them right on. But this here says, we're going to wait at least a month and a half or until you get through deliberating. And that's, that's not, I think you're going beyond your bounds. I mean, I really appreciate you trying to do something in conservation, but I think you're going the wrong way here. I just think that you should leave appointing position to the board of selectmen, that's our job, that's what we do here. And you should advertise and let the board of selectmen know when you have an opening. So, it's the only thing I get to say.
Should I respond?
Sure.
So, on your advice that I'm back here tonight, you suggested in the last meeting that I come back with proposed changes to the software, so that's what I'm here, so surprised to hear that you're against the petition to recommend that I come in.
Well, I'm not saying that we don't, that we're not going to consider it at all, altogether. I mean, you can bring anything you want in here and give it to us, and we can set it aside and consider it if we're going to change our rules and regulations. And that's what I meant, maybe I wasn't clear when I said that. But, if you make up new rules and regulations for the appointing of just conservation people, I think, well, I think we're going way beyond the scope.
I think it's a best practice for all volunteers, not just conservation personnel.
Right, but if you understand that it's difficult to get people on the boards anywhere, and when you look at the last appointment, I just thought that was a bad show of the way everything was done that night. I don't think it should have been done here in the public the way that it was done. It was, it was, there's a lot of people that come in here that I don't personally know myself, but if a fellow selectman makes a motion to appoint him and knows him, then I don't have a problem putting him on the board. If for some reason they don't work out, everybody's schedule changes, everybody, a lot of times people's jobs change. I mean, there's one guy here that's been here for quite a while, and we took his resignation tonight, you know, as a constable. He's been around, been a constable for a good many years, and all of a sudden, boom, bang, he's off doing something else. That's the way it happens in the town. I can see taking your information, and if the board wants to, I'd be more than glad to sit on the board and take a look at the policies and procedures that we drew up for everybody in town, and look at them and see if anything really needs to be changed. And we can sit down and go over it, and we can invite you, if you want to come, and look at them, you know, to make recommendations back to the board on whether we should change anything that's there, but.
To me, there's no consistency to the process where it kind of all depends depending on, you know, what's going on. So, if there are, you know, hard, hard and fast rules and procedures that involve, I think, just seem to be monitored or, you know, gone by, because it varies depending on, you know, what commissioners make it. Last week, or the last meeting, somebody sent an email as a recommendation, and he voted to, for that person, you know. Nobody ever came in front, you know, I don't think he knew the person, but I didn't even know the recommendation was sent, and he voted that president. And I'm not, you know, confusing that person, I don't even know that person, but it just seems that there's no rhyme or reason to see how this works, and this is just trying to formalize a process. And again, based on the last time I was here, stated that, you know, vetting and best practice, you know, would certainly lead to us recommending somebody to you. And again, we understand that you vote in who you want to vote in, it's not about that, it's just about putting somebody forward that we think is good to fit in, and also understands what the job is, because as I mentioned, one person got appointed and went to one meeting and then resigned, you know, so obviously that person didn't really know what they were getting into, and I think they might have been rushed on for whatever reason at the time. I won't mention any names, sorry for that. You know, also, we talked about having diversity on the board. And, you know, currently, again, we have, you know, a small board, we have three folks that are on another board. So, if somebody comes in, if a problem comes up in that particular group, you know, comes in front of us, those three people have to accuse themselves from any of the topics that are, that are discussed, so that makes us an even smaller board. So, you know, that, we lack diversity right now, and that was one of the reasons, you know, that I was here the last time. So, again, I'm back here under the recommendation, and again, just trying to, trying to put a little process in place that seemed to make sense and was reasonable, and that was what I, you know, again, took back from the last time.
All right, if you have some.
Yeah, Mark, first of all, let me thank you for what you do with the Conservation Commission, because I live in a waterfront home, and that's one of the nice things about Pembroke, is you have the water impact and the river impact, and it's important to have people to care about it, so I thank you for that. But, I have some philosophical opposition to this, simply because I go back to the example of Loews. If we had waited fourteen days to make an appointment to fill a vacancy up there, there would be no Loews. It was as close as one vote on a board that would have been sitting with one less member, and we appointed one on a Monday, and I think on Wednesday they took a vote from the planning board or zoning board of appeals, I guess it was Z B A. And, you know, to have your hands tied to that degree, I mean, I, I think we're also making much ado about very little, because we're not flush with volunteers. We've got enough trouble filling various boards that I don't think it's necessary to put them through, you know, as I said to one of the members recently, I said, you know, you get recognized, you come in and get slapped around a little bit, and, you know, get questioned, and then you end up on the board anyway. So, I think the system isn't broken, I think it needs to be tweaked, but I don't go out for the fourteen days, because, you know, it could be, again, another Z B A case, or it could be, you know, a conservation easement or something like that, and, you know, you have hands to tie, and I don't want to do that.
I think it would be amenable to changing the amount of days if that is most suitable, something less than fourteen.
Yeah, Mark, I was going to suggest, and I don't know if the selectmen agree or not, we'd take this, digest it a little bit, come back to you next week, it's something that's more agreeable to us. Maybe we could do something like that. That's just my.
You know, we're open to your suggestions and changes, and, you know, again, I think just to get, you know, something, you know, noted as a process would be a step forward for it.
Well, Bill did, did mention the, the process and policies that we have in place for all boards of commissions, and Sabrina, is that online on the website? Lou developed it a couple of years ago.
Selecting page under vacancies.
Right, right, so, so we do have a policy in place. Feel free to look it up online, but one of the.
She said we'd get one in a copy when you put on.
It's a handbook.
Yeah, so.
Also, America is.
It's, right, so, so there's a, there's a policy in place that the selectmen have for the procedures, and there's also a handbook for all the volunteers on how to, how to conduct themselves and be a good volunteer for the town. So, so we do have written policies in place. But, as Arthur spoke to, those policies aren't adhered to in a hard and fast, black and white way. Two recent appointments, I think, that I can recall, the Recreation Commission and the Council on Aging, where volunteers, a couple of group volunteers on those, on those boards, had a friend come in, sit at the meeting, they enjoyed it, and they said, geez, I'd like to volunteer, there's an open seat, and we've been begging for people to fill those seats. So that's where you get the email recommendation and the quick response by the board of selectmen. There's no need to wait fourteen days. If we have someone that's fits in, has camaraderie with the board, and is capable of the position, there's no sense in waiting. So, therefore, the hard and fast rules are not required in that case. But, we do have written policies, but we need the human element also. So that's why we're here, and a computer doesn't just generate these volunteers, these recommendations. So, what you've recommended is, it's a, it's a good rule of thumb policy, but we can't, can't hold fast to it in every case. But I understand the concept of, of having rules and procedure to follow that's consistent. That way, no one's left out, especially if this, if we have several volunteers for, for one board. So I appreciate the effort. I think the board should, should take this information and review it along with what we already have in place, and if we need to amend the policies that we have in place now, we can. But again, those policies are, are made to be bent when the case arises, when a certain case arises. But I appreciate your effort, and I understand why, why you've taken the effort.
And I don't, like I said, I don't have a problem, I definitely would sit on any subcommittee or whatever that wants to relook at those policies, procedures, they're only three years old. So, I mean, they were, you know, just done three years ago. So, it's a kind of a new policy and procedure, and there's probably a lot of people who don't even know what they are and recognize them, so. And everybody is supposed to follow that, but who's the cop that's going to monitor it that, you know, that's going to look at every single commission and committee and see what's going on? Unless you find out something isn't going very well, or something isn't happening well, and then you start looking into it, and then you find out that, geez, they're violating our policies and procedures, and they shouldn't be doing that. So, one of the things that I definitely would like to go back and change is that rule about missing three meetings, because somebody could do that all year long, and just say, well, I think I'll miss three, and I'll only do two this month, and then I'll skip, and then I'll go to one meeting, and then I can do another couple, take them off. You've got a guy that's doing that right now, and that's not right. And that person should resign. Needless to say, that's not coming up tonight for consideration, but the thing is, is that, like I said, I would definitely sit, take a look and see what we need to change. And the people that do volunteer, it's a lot different from a paid position, so if you're coming, if you're coming on the board, you know, looking to get on for a forty thousand or sixty thousand dollar job a year, you're going to go through a whole set of even stricter ones. a job a year, you're going to go through a whole set of even stricter ones. And I don't know how many interviews that I've done with, with that doing, going through, looking at people. One time we went through, what, 40 something applicants for a position, took the top position out of everything, everybody was really happy about the whole thing. Called the person up and said, you got the job? And they said, no, I don't want it, I just got hired somewhere else. I'm like, what are you kidding me? So you've got to go through the whole process all over again? And it's, I mean, that's, that just happens. I mean, by the side of it. I think the biggest thing and the concern is that, that whoever is coming on a board or a commission or whatever, somebody needs to know them that, that they're a good person, they're good at hot, and they want to do the right thing for the town. That's what it's all about, is doing the right thing for the town, not doing the right thing for any particular pot. It's doing, doing the right thing for everybody in town. And I, I just think that's important.
And also to Mark's standpoint, is let this independent board make the recommendation. That's honestly the bottom line, that's all it is. Not basically, you know, 14 days, you know, I'm a little weary about that, only because of, is it finite that you only meet two times a month?
Yeah, every other week. Well, sometimes we meet every week if there's an agenda, that's...
Okay, so that can be changed anywhere. But yeah, from, from what I've seen, getting through this anyway, it's just basically make sure that they're independent of us, unless like one of us is jumping on the commission something, to recommend to us to vote that they'd like this person to be on the board. I understand that you sit there and go, we're begging for people on these boards and commissions, and I get it, but by saying that, personally, it's a cop out. You know, people want to be on these boards and commissions, I know other people have talked to me throughout town, want to be active in these boards and commissions, but to say, because we're begging for people, that's just, you know, that's, that's just a burden to no end. So that's, for the bottom line, it pretty much means that they want, as an independent board, to recommend to us, because we are the appointment authority. And if I'm wrong, Mark, let me...
That's correct, and, and, you know, last time, we had, we actually had a really qualified civil engineer, that was an applicant, that we never even got to, you know, vet, because of, you know, because of the way that happened. So to me, that was a, that would have been a great addition to the board, and, you know, we failed and everything, got to go through that process with...
Well...
And that would have, you know, again, added another organist to the board that we really have, and it was a very diverse person, was a great background.
Well, if they're really interested in it, they don't have to be on the Conservation Commission in order to attend meetings and find out what's going on and find out whether that's something that they really want to do. And it would be a lot easier for you and your board or your commission to allow these people to come in and sit in on meetings, a public meeting, anybody can go there. There's nothing to say that that engineer can't come to meetings or start to come to some meetings. And he's already fulfilled part of the process that we, that we originally made up. And if all of a sudden, you know, an applicant resigns or whatever, and, and he wants to put his application in, or he may put an application in now, and if you have him on the list, then you could call him and call him back in and say, this guy's already made three meetings or four meetings, this other person resigned and we'd like to put him on, and we're going to take your recommendations. Ninety-nine out of 100, who would probably be taking? You know, so it doesn't mean that they have to get appointed before they can go to a meeting and do any of the stuff that they're done.
Nope, that's a hard one.
Yeah. So they can come, and if they're interested, we'd love to have them. We do need good people.
Yeah, that's a point, because even a, just because you don't have a vote at that time until a seat opens up, you could participate in the meetings and actually be an influence in the meeting, especially an engineer who, who has business acumen that's related to what you folks do. If, if they're interested in the process and they want, want to help, they can listen in to the meetings and contribute and have a dialogue with the board, and some people on the board might be strong in one aspect of conservation and weaken another, and they could take that recommendation and then help them make a decision. And sooner or later, a seat will open up. They always do.
With your brief speech, I actually know exactly what you're talking about. Would you be wrong?
Sure, go ahead.
Because Ed's office does all of this, interacts with the chairman, with the applicants, tries to figure out how to best recruit, get recruitment ideas. You have several boards that have had vacancies for years, and it is very difficult to recruit and get people to serve up. And historic district finally, after a year of recruitment, found a qualified candidate, and that was the letter of interest and email that they appointed on at the last meeting. But going down to other towns, because I go to their open houses, and find out what tricks are they using, how are they recruiting, what are they doing differently than Pembroke is doing? And there are towns, to Mr. Soder's point, that there are specific boards with a lot of interest. Conservation's generated a lot of interest, whereas the mission on disabilities hasn't. And they desperately need members. And advisory needs members. But to Mr. Soder's point and the board's point, some of these other towns have waiting lists. When a qualified candidate comes in, they're put top of the list for the next appointment. It's not a bad idea if you actually can get a lot of people to come in and generate interest on something as important as conservation, to consider that kind of an opportunity. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. The other thing that, you know, I don't know how legal it is, and maybe Ed could devise this on this, is that, you know, maybe there's alternate numbers. Maybe the board should consider making alternate numbers on conservation, so that when somebody does drop out, you've already got somebody there that's qualified to take the person's seat. And if they're an alternate member, they can vote with that person. If one or two people don't show up to vote, you're not going to have a problem with the board. So I would have no idea that that would be within our purview or not, to establish alternate members, to establish people like that. I don't have any idea. No, I'm just bringing it up, that maybe there's, maybe there's room to look at that, maybe we should look at that and say, maybe that could be one of our answers back to you. If you appoint a couple of alternate members, those people would already be on the board, and they'd be available when there is an opening.
Well, I think giving alternate numbers is a great idea.
And I don't have a problem with that. That would give you plenty of time to look at them and judge them or whatever.
I, I just don't know, so we can question whether you're...
Oh, you wouldn't, the board of selectmen would.
Yeah, yeah, that's a bylaw change or what?
No, Ed would need to check with the council to make sure I...
We'll check with them, let them know. If that's a possibility, then maybe they could commit an alternate member.
Even if it's not the title alternate, I, I think the opportunity to come in and, as a member of the public, you, you can influence the meeting, you can influence the board and be part of the discussion, look at, look at the plans, may not have a vote that day, but again, you'll, you'll gain knowledge of the board, how it works, some camaraderie with the board members, and then when a seat opens up, you'll know whether you want to make that commitment or not. Even being an alternate can be a commitment that some people might shy away from, some people just might want to dip their toe into the water and sea without having an official commitment.
So we've, we've had alternates in the fisheries for the last six years, and it's worked out really well, because when somebody drops out on the fisheries, then the alternate moves right up into the under spot.
What I was thinking about is, you know, does that give them some kind of a blocking status that when the next politician, the first alternate goes in, you know, I think it opens up a lot of questions, but they, they're probably, you know, to think about it, I just don't know the answers to the, to letting it, there's questions behind the box, for sure.
Well, certainly something I'll take a look into in Ed, Sabrina, take a look at that with, along with town council, and we'll consider it as well. So I think we'll consider your proposal here as well, but we thank you for coming in.
Okay. Appreciate your time, and thank you.
Thanks.
And Mark?
And I would also like to say to Mark and the Conservation Commission, they did a great job with this header screen, it's a good decent paper here. It's not regular paper, it really is a nice piece of paper. All right, next up, we're moving on to the board action items, first of which is to vote to accept a resignation from Sandra Damon, registrar.
Vote to accept with regret.
Good motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we accept that resignation with regret.
That's true.
Yes. Sure, go ahead. Now please go up for the microphone.
Gentlemen, I received a print and butter, and it's actually listing it as Senate Street, which I own property on, but I also own a buying property to F-15 Oak Street. I think they asked me to show up for Senate Street as a print and butter, but in all my knowledge, it was 15 Oak, or F-15, it's a corporate part, John, just as I described.
Sabrina, would you be able to take a look into that?
I don't know. That holds...
They accept that, I would say, the notice for 43-1 Senate Street, which I'm also on Senate Street. And the actual picture, we thought it's corporate part.
It is corporate part.
So actually, the property pulls in. Thank you.
No problem, thank you.